Okay, with that, I will call to order this meeting, this regular meeting of the Ledyard Plan and Zoning Commission. This is a remote meeting hosted from everywhere. Present tonight are Commissioners Woody Cherry, Wood, Boudreau, Evans, and Scanlon are here. I don't believe Mr. Drisco is here. I've unmuted the lines. Mr. Drisco, are you present? Hearing nothing. I believe he's not here. Mr. Kulo, are you able to hear us? Okay, we still can't, we still can't hear you, Jeff. So I think unfortunately, I'm going to need to seat an alternate for you. I see you talking, but I can't hear you. So I can't. I sympathize. I know you're frustrated. I don't know what to tell you. So I think I'm going to have to see someone else for you for now. If you're able to dial in as soon as we can hear you, you know, open the chat or something and let us know you're dialed in and we can verify that we're able to hear you so that we can get your input. So given that, I'm going to seat Katie Scanlon for Mr. Kulo. And so we'll move forward that way. Okay, we have no additions or changes to the agenda. Do we have any citizens petitions on non-agenda items? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the first item in Old Business, which is application PZ 2001, 740 Colonel Ledyard Highway. And so I will unmute Mr. Heller. Mr. Heller, can you say something to make sure I can hear you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mr. Heller. Thank you. With that, I will let you proceed with the presentation. Mrs. Dobson's is sharing her screen. So if you're talking and she has the four latest sheets preloaded. So if you want to, if you want to refer to a sheet that you're talking about, just say which sheet you're looking for and she'll pull it up so that everyone can see, see, you know, at least in lower resolution, what you're referring to, okay?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Harry Heller. I'm an attorney with an office at 736 Route 32 in Uncasville and I'm representing the applicant, Ledged Center LLC. With me this evening is Peter Gardner, who is the land surveyor who has prepared the site development plan that the Commission will be considering this evening. This is an application with respect to the repurposing of a portion of the Ledged Center School property located at 740 Colonel Ledged Highway across the street from the town hall. As the Commission may recall, we were before you in January of this year on an informal basis airing our vision for not only the redevelopment of the Ledged Center School building itself, but also the potential build out for the whole site. This is an interim application that we are filing because we have contractual agreements with a couple of proposed tenants for the building and we're anxious to move forward with the repurposing of the existing building and bring some good commercial development to the Ledged Center School in the Ledged Center Design District. Both uses, the proposed package store use and the proposed child daycare use are uses, which are uses permitted as of right in the LCCD. The proposal that we're going to present this evening is consistent with the proposal, which was aired before the Commission on an informal basis with respect to the former school building in that the southerly, the westerly elevation of the existing building, we had committed to providing commercial use as a component of an overall mixed-use project. In addition, we have repurposed a portion of the northerly rear wing also for office commercial. If you may recall on the conceptual that we had in January, we were showing that as all residential. But based on the response that we've received from the market to date, we feel that there is potential for filling both the westerly elevation of the front portion of the building as well as the westerly elevation of the north portion of the building with commercial office use.
Deb, can you see three and share that please?
Excuse me?
I was just asking Deb to share Sheet 3, which shows the...
Sheet 3 is, yes.
So that people have a view of the plan. Sorry, Harry.
The proposed development. So if you go to Sheet 3, you can see that the area that I'm talking about, actually two areas. On the portion of the building closest to Colonel Ledged Highway, you see where it says future commercial to be determined. And also on the rear wing of the building, that whole wing was shown as future residential on the conceptual that we aired with your Commission in January. And now we've taken a portion of that, that you can see, we've labeled as future commercial development, 100 feet by 26 feet. So we are committing at this point a portion of that for office commercial use. And again, you know, depending on market demand, we'd like to put as much commercial retail development in this building as there's market demand for. But this is going to be a sequential process as we move forward with the redevelopment of this building. Now, the site plan that is before you this evening, Sheet 1 is an A2 survey of the existing property. Sheet 2 is the existing conditions plan. And Sheet 3 is the proposed redevelopment in this first segment of the redevelopment of the school building. We'll come back to that in a moment. Sheet 4 is the detail sheet detailing some of the details to be applied in the redevelopment of this portion of the site. Now, going back to Sheet 3, which is the proposed site development conditions for this phase of the development. You can see that we are proposing the retail package store in the, at the southerly end of the westerly portion of the building. It's proposed 80 feet by 42 feet. It's about 3,360 square feet. It will have access both in the front of the building and at the south elevation of the building. At the northerly end of that building, we have the proposed daycare facility, which is 46 feet by 36 feet. It is intended to accommodate up to 40 child daycare students ranging in age from infants up to age 14. And that will incorporate the use of the, of a portion of the existing playground, which is located northerly of the building on the site. We're proposing seven new stone parking spaces along the easterly periphery of the playground area. And we have eight parking spaces proposed. The southerly elevation of the building adjacent to the proposed package store use. And then a total of 53 spaces in the front of the building. Access will be as it currently is with two curb cuts onto Colonel Ledged Highway at the northerly periphery of the site and the southerly periphery of the site. Septic for this building will be accommodated by the existing septic system on the property, which has more than adequate capacity for the uses which are proposed at this time. As we move forward with the redevelopment of the site and we approach the design limits of those existing septic systems, we'll have to evaluate that at that time based on the septic demand for the uses that are proposed. But at this point, the septic system is way overdesigned for the uses which are proposed. We are proposing lighting along the front of the building, along the sidewalk to mimic the period lighting that you currently have in the LCCD, which we find very attractive. And if you look on Sheet 4, you'll see that there's a detail for the pedestrian site lighting, which is consistent with the street lighting you currently have along Colonel Ledged Highway. We also have a detail on that sheet for parking lot lighting, which is a more commercial downlighting application that you can see in the, sort of in the upper right-hand portion of the sheet. That's what we're proposing. We're not married to that. If you would like the period lighting for the parking lot also, the applicant is amenable to that. We believe that we have submitted all of the plans and information that is required for a site plan approval for a permitted use in the LCCD. We have had a series of staff review comments submitted by the town planner incorporating both her comments on the site review as well as the comments received from your municipal fire marshal as well as your municipal building official. There are still a couple of issues outstanding based on those review comments that we feel can be addressed with conditions of approval. And we would urge the Commission to approve the site plan application. We believe all of the other comments have been adequately addressed. One other thing I'd like to point out is that the stormwater design for the proposed new parking improvements in the westerly portion of the site have been reviewed by the town engineer. It is not a closed drainage system. It is designed to sheet flow westerly. And you'll see if you look at Sheet 3 or 4, immediately to the west of the parking area, you see a proposed six-foot wide by 272-foot long by 12-inch deep rain garden. And it makes a reference to the detail for that rain garden. So we're anticipating sheet flow off of the parking lot so we don't have any point discharge. The rain garden will be planted with a planting scheme, which is specified for the uptake of typical pollutants that you have in your stormwater runoff from the commercial parking lot. And that stormwater will be infiltrated back into the ground so that we do not have any point source discharge from this application. That design has been reviewed by your municipal engineer and has been approved by him. So with that, if the Commission has any questions, either of Peter or myself will be glad to try to address them.
Thank you. I have a few questions to start off and then I'll make room for the rest of the Commission as well. So first, I just wanted to make sure I understood the, the traffic flow in a couple of locations. So is it planned for there to be bidirectional vehicle traffic? So north-south, both ways through the front parking area?
Yes.
Okay. And so what is the, the traffic flow to, so on the east side, so behind the building, there's that very large paved area with parking spots that, that face the rear of the building. Access to that is from the driveway to the south? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. That's, I believe that's the only access to that.
Okay, and so you'd essentially be looping around the package store in order to access those parking spots back there?
Yes, and you know, at, at this point in the project, we really don't anticipate that those spaces will be receiving any use.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood where the, the access to that was. And so on the parking, on Sheet 1, I, I don't quite follow where some of the math for the parking spaces comes from. I think there's plenty of parking on the site for the uses that you have proposed. But I wasn't quite sure where the, the math came from. You know, for instance, for the, the daycare, you propose, what, 11 spots, I think?
That table on page 1 is wrong. I had sent your planner an email this evening shortly before the meeting. I'm not sure if Liz received it or not.
I did.
With a revised parking calculation table that should also be incorporated as a condition of approval. But let me, let me just tell you what, what that calculation should be. The, your child daycare regulations require two spaces for each six children up to your capacity. So that should require 14 parking spaces for the daycare. Your retail sales in your regulations require one space for each thousand square feet of gross floor area. So currently, the retail that we're proposing is the package store. So that would require four parking spaces. And we're showing 13,600 square feet of future commercial office space. So I utilize the more conservative requirement in your regulations, which is two spaces per 1,000 square feet of office space, which would require 28 parking spaces. So the, the total parking demand, as currently anticipated, would be 46 spaces.
Okay. Okay, and so we can certainly add that as a condition. The other thing that I noticed was, was missing was the table of zoning information. So for that district, all the zoning information. So I assume that we can get that added to Sheet 1 as well as a corrected parking table?
Certainly. Your typical zoning compliance table.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. So, okay, so I kind of understand most of the, the parking. The next question is around pedestrian flow. So there's, I'm trying to kind of understand what the desired pedestrian flow is. So there is a painted crosswalk across the entrance that's shown essentially across from the child daycare. So it's, it's essentially just north of the handicap spot for the daycare center. Do you see the crosswalk I'm referring to?
Yeah, the one that says painted crosswalk?
Yeah, I'm not sure where that's supposed to go.
That's supposed to go to the playground for access from the daycare to the playground.
No, so I'm talking to the one that is, so yeah, tough to do remotely. So it's just to the left of the handicap spot.
Okay, I see where you're talking now. That, that's a Peter question.
Okay, this is Peter Gardner's for the applicant. I put that on just because I know the site. It's good, gentle grades. I felt that people would walk around. There is a sidewalk and a ramp coming out of the daycare area. And I just felt it would be a good idea to have that painted crosswalk there. It's easy enough to take out if the Commission wants me to, but I didn't see any harm putting it on.
So my, my question was because we, so who is intended to use that? Because there's no access from Colonel Ledyard Highway. And so is the thought that that would be accessed by people parking there? And so the only, the reason I'm asking is, you know, when we put a crosswalk there, it's going to, you know, we need to understand whether or not people are actually going to use it. And so I don't want, I don't want to put a crosswalk there that isn't going to get used or isn't going to be safe. And so that's my concern is trying to understand who is going to be walking there.
I don't know who's going to walk there. I, like I said, I just thought it'd be a nice thing to have there, but it's not going to be a lot of traffic. Probably don't even need it.
Okay. So related to that, to the handicap parking spot there, I didn't see on the plan a donation or a notation for ramp access from there to the sidewalk that runs in front of the school. Is there an existing ramp there or will there be a ramp there?
I believe that the building official indicated that the design of the ramps would be addressed at the zoning permit stage.
I believe that the design of them will be, but the location of them is what I'm concerned with right now. I see ramp access from the two adjacent handicap spots there in the center of the building?
Yes.
But the, we have the, the four loading/unloading daycare spots, which includes one handicap spot. And I don't see ramp access to the sidewalk there?
Yeah, I think that's just, no.
It's there.
Ms. Verdic?
No, I, there's one at the south end of the building and there's one at the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you look, Mr. Chairman, if you look a little bit to the north of the handicap spot, you'll see in front of the daycare, it has proposed handicap ramp. I think it's just in the wrong position. It need, it needs to be slid down.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering because I saw that notation there and I wasn't sure there was a ramp there, why there was a ramp there, but there didn't seem to be one adjacent to that handicap spot.
We'll slide that down to, to, to the handicap spot so it's aligned as the other two are.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak? So yeah, there, there is going to be a handicap ramp down there and I think that when Randy reviews and approves the plan, the handicap ramp will have to be, it always has to be the closest to the entrance. And he will make a decision as to where those handicap ramps will be going, but there will be one at that end of the building.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that the closest ramp access wasn't in the middle of that parking lot by the other handicap spots.
It is not. There's going to be three accesses for the handicap spots for each end of the building and in the middle. And I wanted to clarify one more thing and I think you've all said it in certain ways, but I want to be clarified and, you know, be very clear that when this site plan is approved, as future commercial development goes into it, that's permitted by right, that can be approved by the zoning officer. Because that was the reason why I had the parking asked, Pete Gardner, to put the parking table on there because we want to make sure that the future development, there's enough parking for all of the future developments so that every time somebody comes into the, to rent a space, they're not going to have to come back to the planning and zoning. Now, there comes a, a point where we say, you know what? You're out of parking. Then they'll have to come back for a site plan modification to add more parking for any given use. And this would only be for uses permitted as of right, obviously. So this, this site plan would accompany all the commercial permitted uses as of right that can be approved by the zoning officer.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So one last question on the handicap spot. So there's a, there's a handicap ramp on the southernmost handicap spot. And so that's level terrain there so that there's handicap access to the package store from that location?
Well, when you say level terrain, that, that's a ramp from the parking lot up to the sidewalk because the sidewalk is elevated.
Right, so but from, from that location on the sidewalk, they have to head south and then east to get to the door of the package store? Is that correct?
They have to head south slightly. There's an entrance to the package store along the westerly elevation of the building as well as along the southerly elevation of the building. But to answer your question, it's all very flat out there.
Okay. The, the westerly entrance to the package store appears not to be shown on Sheet 3?
They have to, you see the dotted vestibule there? Right, right adjacent easterly to the handicap ramp?
Okay.
They have to go in there and then through the building into the package store.
Gotcha, so they enter the, the main building and essentially turn right inside the building in order to enter the package store from the north?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That makes better sense. Okay, I have a question on the dumpster located on the northwest corner of the site?
Yes.
So the, the site, so that is essentially a road front dumpster. I noticed it screened. But in order for a, a truck to access it, it's going to have to block the drive. The other question I had was that it looks like in order to get trash to that dumpster, it's going to involve walking trash by the playground area, perhaps on the road. There doesn't appear to be a sidewalk there. And I wondered why that dumpster was there instead of perhaps at the end of the seven-spot stoned parking area that kind of has a hammerhead at the end of it? Is there a reason that dumpster is located there?
Yeah. That would be a very tough maneuver for that front-end loader truck to get into the area that you're talking about because of the turning radiuses. Actually, where, where we're proposing it, it's an easy maneuver because the trash loader will come in from the south entrance, will pull up to the dumpster location. They, they have a front-end loader that attaches to the dumpster to load it. And then they just have a small backing maneuver back into the travel lane and out. So we felt that that was the most convenient location for it from, from an accessibility and a traffic flow perspective.
So yeah, I mean, while it's doing that maneuver, it does block that roadway, correct?
No question about it.
Yeah, and so I, I'm also concerned about the trash bean hall directly next to the playground area.
What, what's the issue with that?
So it means that someone's going to be carrying open trash receptacles, probably either on the roadway or on the grass directly by the playground area. And anytime there is wind or anything like that, I'm worried that trash is going to end up in the playground area.
I don't necessarily think there'll be open receptacles, but without question, they have to. but without question, they have to walk past the, or carry it past the playground area.
Yeah. Okay. So the, there's two propane tanks. So the one behind the package store is shown with bollards to protect it. Is, it looks like the one on the north end behind the daycare center is also accessed via a driveway there. Are there going to be bollard protections for that tank as well?
There needs to be, yes. And on the fire marshal's comments, you'll note that he made a comment about that tank. And I have spoken with the installer, and that is actually going to be four 120-gallon liquid propane tanks that are interconnected rather than one 400-gallon tank. And based on his representations to me, that has a different code requirement from a single tank. So we think that that's going to address the fire marshal's comment, but the fire marshal's comment should still be made a condition of approval if the commission votes to approve the site plan.
Okay. A question on signs. So you show two kiosk signs at the two entrances. I also saw a note on one of the sheets regarding building front signs. We don't seem to have the details for those. So I will find it, I'm not sure how we can approve the sign permits there. Are those conceptual? And so you'll come in separately for sign permits for the site?
Well, we'll have to do that because they're not designed yet. You know, I mean, the kiosk sign, we've given you a location and a size, but the design has not been done yet. So, you know, I think you can approve the location and size of the kiosk signs because they're in compliance with your regulations, but the individual signage will still require approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just taking notes here as we go.
Yeah, I agree with Attorney Heller's assessment with regard to the kiosk sign. I'd like to make that a part of this approval, just the size and the location only. And there is a detail shown on sheet four.
So if we're...
But not the individual signs. Individual signs require additional permitting. With me on that, you know what I mean?
And we agree.
So the kiosks, the kiosk's size is determined by the number of subboards that are a part of the sign, correct?
I don't have the regulations in front of me, but it's, detail on sheet four is what is required per regulations. I think that's a maximum size. Am I correct, Pete?
Yes. Thank you.
So in other words, each individual, you know, applicant would have to come in, the owner would have to come in for each individual's sign. So all you're really approving is a kiosk sign in that location, but each individual sign as they come in would be required further permitting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yeah, please, Mr. Chair.
I believe that once we approve the kiosk sign, location and size, what it says is beyond the purview of the commission, and the kiosk sign remains approved. But the signs addressed in note eight on sheet one would require individual permits. The ones that are wall-mounted, because we have no information on those. We have requirements in our regs on how big they can be. You don't get to say what they say and stuff, and they haven't provided anything on those. So those, I think, would be a simple zoning permit approved by the zoning officer, because they're in accordance with the regs. But the kiosk sign, location and size, once we approve that, commission should be done. What it says is not our purview.
So I believe for, let me, so for a kiosk sign, the commission only needs to act if it's illuminated or if they want to get rid of the far-fetched site window below it.
Correct.
So, you know, so I have no problem with the location, the conceptual location of the sign. I don't see any point in moving beyond that, since it's separate sign permit, it's going to have to come in anyways.
Well, the permit would just be for the building-mounted signs, because the kiosk sign's approved. And how big they make the individual placards would probably depend on how many establishments they're trying to advertise.
Mr. Chairman, each one of those kiosk signs would require a zoning permit. So, I mean, you would be approving the location of the kiosk sign, but as the individual signs, just like with the wall signs that Mike just mentioned, they'd each have to come in for zoning and building permits.
Yeah, okay. I think we're, I think we're all in agreement on that one. Let me check. I believe, I think that's my initial list of questions. I'm going to unmute the lines. And so if you have, please remute your lines, and we keep the background noise to a minimum. And then we'll move through. Does any commissioner have questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood, please ask your questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have two associated questions. I'm wondering if there's any state laws or what the states' laws are in putting 400 gallons of propane liquid fuel next to a playground?
As far as I'm aware, the NFPA requirements are, require separating distances solely from combustible materials and entryways. And again, it varies upon the size of the tank. There are different regulations based on the size of the tank. The requirement at the north end of the building for 4120s is different from the requirement at the south end of the building, where we have a 1,000-gallon tank. But as far as I'm aware, there's, it's only separation from entryways and combustibles.
So my point to the commission is, is that, that's very, I'm very concerned about having 480 gallons of liquid propane next to a playground. However, I will move on to my other question. So what is, what are the, what are the regulations about having the sale of alcoholic beverages at, as far as the school, which they're infants until age 14? We can call them daycare or whatever you want. But I'm concerned a little bit about the sale of alcohol so close to youth. And then that alcohol, though, also spills into, is there a requirement to, what's the distance requirement between a sale of alcohol and a church? So there's two parts of my question there. Please.
There is no state regulation on that. In some municipalities, there are zoning regulations that require certain separating distances. But I found none in your zoning regulation.
Right, which, which may be, which I would invite the commission for us to consider both 480 gallons of liquid propane and the sale of alcohol either near a school. Then I would, I would ask that question, which is not relevant to the site plan, but the, the sale of alcohol, is that someone relocating within the town of Ledyard? Because I've checked with the Department of Consumer Protection, and there are no open permits. So it must mean that someone is relocating within Ledyard.
Let me address that in two phases. First, this is a site plan approval. It's not a special permit approval. So the commission's role is strictly administrative to determine compliance with your regulations, not to consider the specialty evaluation criteria that you typically consider when evaluating a special permit application. And secondly, yes, it is, it is someone within the town of Ledyard that is relocating. So it's just a change of location of an existing permit.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Mr. Wood, regarding your first comment on the propane, we will condition that the fire marshal issues his approval of any of the propane installs. And he's really the, you know, they're the expert on, you know, where propane can be safely installed and what protections need to be in place for that. Do other commissioners have questions?
I've got a couple. This is Tom. Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say that on Google Maps, I can see that all those painted crosswalks are already existing. And the sidewalk on the south end is existing as well. As a driver or big truck for many years, I really would like to see that dumpster moved to the other end of the building alongside of the one that exists there. Because the last thing I, as a truck driver, wanted was to be involved in trucks and kids. Because kids are kids and they do what they do. If all the dumpsters were away from them, it would be a good thing. Thank you very much.
Because of the length of the building and the fact that at Build Out, we're going to have a number of different commercial uses here, it's important for the functionality of the center to have the ability for refuse disposal at both ends of the building.
I understand the problem, Attorney Heller. I just know that I don't want to have trucks around kids.
Chairman?
Ms. Verdic?
Perhaps for the daycare center, they can do the canisters. Would that be something that might be considered by the applicant instead of a dumpster? If you say functionally, a dumpster needs to be at that end of the building, perhaps you can consider canisters?
Well, right now, we're talking, yeah, right. And I appreciate the thought, but right now, we're talking about the daycare. But we're talking about, you know, future commercial development of the whole west wing of the building.
I understand. I just think that, you know, if the dumpsters are all to the rear of the building and you just need one, you know, for the daycare center, perhaps you could add canisters as needed.
But then, because our planned development incorporates residential use of the easterly portions of that building, then you're going to have people carrying refuse through the building, through the residential area to the, to a dumpster in the rear, which we don't deem desirable.
But the current access in order to get to that dumpster, if there was residential development, is through the building, is it not?
It would be through the building, yes. But again, you know, that hasn't even been designed at this point. That's just conceptual.
Yeah.
Certainly with the commercial businesses, it wouldn't be, you know, outrageous that they have to walk through the building to dispose of their trash and recycling. I'm just saying. It's not residential. It is commercial.
And when you look at the drawing that says residential development in the back section, if the dumpster was down there, somewhere in the general vicinity of where it says concrete steps, it would solve everybody's problem.
The current parking area shown there, that's in that area, is a stone parking area, correct?
I'm sorry?
The proposed parking area that is near the location that Mr. Budra was talking about, on the north side, that's a stone area, right? It's not paved?
Correct.
So I mean, it would strike me that it would be a relatively inexpensive change to expand that in order to allow whatever space was needed in order to put a dumpster back there and to get truck access there. Is that incorrect?
Well, it's incorrect that it would be a convenient turning movement for a truck. Look at the distance between the playground and the building itself. You're going to have to make a turn in and then an immediate left turn. I'm not saying it can't be done, but without putting a template on it, knowing what the turning requirements of that truck is, it's a hard question to answer.
So your concern about the choke point is where that crosswalk is to the playground?
Well, you've got a turn in at the playground, and then you've got to turn left into that parking area. And then assuming you put the dumpster at the end of that parking area, you're going to have a truck backing out of that area.
Are you talking about here?
Yes. Well, no, a little bit.
At the north end of the stoned parking area, see where contraelevation 12 is labeled?
I can't see very well. If we could zoom in a little bit, Deb.
I think Tom was talking for the east side of the building with 14 parking spots that show up behind the future residential.
Oh, okay.
That he's not talking about up in the stone area, because that just brings the truck closer to the daycare center.
I apologize, Tom. Yeah, thank you for the clarification. I see what you're saying.
And getting the truck out of that area would be, I think, a more dangerous maneuver.
So Tom, you were actually talking about on the south end of the future planned residential development. That's what you're suggesting?
Exactly. You know, I would prefer to have it somewhere where you didn't have a bunch of kids.
Yeah.
I think when the residential development is designed, you will see dumpsters on that side of the building for the residents.
And I don't dispute that. But certainly, you're not going to have it right up against the building.
I saw the fire marshal's comments.
Well, not, yeah, not only the combustibility issue, which is a code requirement, just the aesthetic characteristics of it. We can't put a dumpster right up against the residential elevation.
Well, we have it screened out in the front between the playground and the highway.
It'll be screened wherever it is. But I can assure you, if I was, if I was developing a property with a residential component, I'm going to put my dumpster in an area that's not obtrusive and is not going to inhibit my marketing of my product.
Okay, do commissioners have other questions or comments?
Mike, Chair, I'd like to talk about the lighting plan.
Yes.
So when I look, I see the fixtures on the building. It looks like there's three at the package store. There's one at the, what's marked entry for future commercial. And then when we get down towards the daycare center, it looks like there is a pedestrian sightlight by the building, but between the overhang and the ramp... by the building, but between the overhang and the ramp, I don't see a building-mounted light or anything, so that concerned me a little bit. It looks like across the front, we have one, two, two lights, one on each side of the parking lot. If I'm, one on each side of the main entrance in the parking lot area of the pedestrian-type lights on the building side, parking lot lights on the street side. Is that? Did I catch that pretty good?
Yes, the parking lot lights are on the street side, and there's four of the, or five of the pedestrian lights along the frontage of the building.
Okay, five. Let me look. There's one in front of the package store. There's one after about the fourth parking spot.
Yes.
One after about the 10th parking spot.
Yes.
And then one on the other side of the entrance and one over by the daycare center.
Yes. And the daycare center is accessed also over the existing, I called it overhang entry.
Yeah, goes through that way.
Yeah, and that's lit up too.
There's lights there, okay. When I, when I look, is there, when I look at the paved driveway and where the entrance is for the package store, there's a symbol that it could be a water main shut off, or it could be a light post in the middle of the driveway. I can't tell. Or a fire hydrant at the gate. It looks like there are no pedestrian lights up at that end. They're all building lights.
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about, Mr. Cherry.
I'm on the southeast corner.
Southeast corner of the building?
When I look where the gate is, there's two gates off. Is that a hydrant or is that a light?
That's a hydrant.
Okay, what lighting are we providing for the dumpster and the propane tank? Any at all in the back of the building?
None other than the light that's at the southeast corner of the package store.
Okay. Just that one?
Just that one.
Are those existing?
Those are proposed.
Proposed? Okay, so there's downlights?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman already talked about the propane. The question was asked whether we were proposing two-way traffic in front of the building. May alleviate some of the concern if that was one way, south to north. I don't know how your principles, whether they would agree or not. But if it went south to north, came in on the south side, went across the building, out on the north, that may make it a little easier for truck access to the dumpster and such, and be a little bit safer for kids. You only have to look one way.
Oh, that's absolutely true, Commissioner Cherry.
Isn't it? Yeah. I don't disagree with you, Mr. Cherry, but I'd like to have a discussion with the client offline.
That's fine. I'm just saying that would make it better. Better is always a question. Is it good enough, you know? But that would make it better. My questions, other than that, I think we're all asked and answered. That's all I had.
Okay, I've unmuted all lines. I believe Mr. Menarca wanted to make a comment regarding the dumpster.
Yes, yes. Thank you for muting me. Hi, this is Sal Menarca. I'm trying to develop this nice piece to bring into Ledyard. And your concern with the dumpster and the truck, I would like to see if the dumpster could be picked up off hours and picked up from, from the street, meaning coming in from, not through the school, not through the long front of the school, but coming from the other way, angle where it should just come in, so we'd never come into contact with anybody on that end of the property because there's really nothing going on there, and tuck it right back there. So it looks like part of the escape and come in that way, so the truck wouldn't come through the whole property to get the garbage.
I'm good with that.
Mr. Boudreaux, I didn't quite under, if you understood that, could you explain that to me? I didn't quite follow what was being proposed there. I apologize.
All right, so the way, so let me explain. I would like to
If you are not Mr. Menarca or Mr. Boudreaux, could you mute your line, please? Mr. Menarca, please continue. There's a lot of background noise. I was having trouble hearing.
So the way, so the way the all of the activity involving unloading the dumpster would take place in off-hours. So the kids wouldn't be there. So everything, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Mr. Menarca, it sounded like you were proposing a slightly different screening plan or direction. I just wanted to make sure I understood you. Could you repeat what you said there?
I don't think, what I was trying to say was, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the gentleman's name, but he was concerned about the truck and being able, near the kids and going in that way. That would be, I was thinking that he was, the truck would be coming through the property, meaning in front of the school, and then making the turn and picking up the garbage, basically like right in front of the daycare, right in front of the playground area. What I was suggesting is if the truck comes in from the entrance, you're facing the building the right side, and pick up the dumpster that way, where he would just pull right in, we would make it where it'd go far enough back so we'd not interfere with the traffic on the main road. And it could pick up the dumpster, and the truck would never be, the truck would never pass in front of the plaza, the, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I understand you now.
Is that like a turn 90 degrees to point it towards the street?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Harry Heller for the record. In order to do what Mr. Menarca is suggesting, it requires two things. One, if you look at the dumpster, it's oriented slightly southeast to northwest. It would have to be changed to orient it slightly southwest to northeast, so the truck can make that maneuver. And secondly, it would require two-way traffic.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Cherry, the other thing I noticed on the drawing is there's a utility box unit and a proposed kiosk sign, both in that area. The kiosk sign could be relocated to the other side of the driveway, but the utility box probably can't. And I don't remember how big those are, and I think that was an AT&amp;T box that went in there.
Yeah, Peter Gardner just indicated that just reorienting that, as I suggested, would not impact that box. It would require the relocation of the kiosk sign.
So does that mean that?
I think that the traffic might be best from north to south. And I think what you're saying really makes a lot of sense. If we turn the dumpster, so we can pick it up on the way off Colonel Ledyard Highway and then exit the other way, that ought to work really well. And the truck is not backing up anywhere near close to the kids, which is my concern.
But that would also mean that the dumpster can't be screened from Colonel Ledyard Highway.
Oh, yeah, it could have, we've got the white, white water vinyl fencing around it and then screened beyond with Arbe Vitae. You could have the, you know, blonde door type of enclosure on the front that opens. I mean, you couldn't screen it with Arbe Vitae, obviously, facing Colonel Ledyard Highway, but you could still screen it with the white fencing.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cherry?
If I were king for a day, I'd prefer one-way traffic south to north with the dumpster located as it is. I think that would be safer for the children than north to south. And my reasoning is people are used to pulling in the driveway on the south end already. And that's the access to many things in the back. So you would have a driveway across the front that goes north to south, and then you'd have the west-to-east driveway on the south end. I'd rather have two-way traffic on the south end and one way going north on that driveway, if I were king, just for what it's worth.
Yeah.
That might also actually be useful for the daycare in the morning when you have a lot of parents coming. Keep the traffic off the road.
There's more queuing space, yeah.
And then there's only one way, so the kids don't, you know, run across two-way traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments or questions from commissioners?
Does my audio work yet?
Mr. Kulo?
Wow. I clicked a few buttons there. On the subject that you've been talking about, you had mentioned that you had a painted crosswalk to nowhere there. If you, you do have a little space there, if you could put a dumpster at maybe 45 degrees to the roadway, you might, you might kill two birds with one stone there. The dumpster would be closer to the point of origin. You'd have to carry the garbage a shorter distance. And I don't know about getting a truck in and out. There might be some angle you could orient the dumpster so that you could get a truck in there and out readily.
It's unacceptable to us from an aesthetic perspective. And I, you know, this is the focal point of your town. I don't think you want a dumpster out there.
Right.
It would have to be screened from the, from the Colonel Ledyard Highway.
Without question. I mean, it would be screened the way it is where we're proposing it, but I think it's much more obtrusive in that location.
Jeff, I agree with Attorney Heller that we would have Arbe Vitae in front of a business location instead of visibility from the street.
Okay, I saw that we had a, we still had that crosswalk there after all this. I have one more comment when it comes my turn.
Please, Mr. Kulo, continue.
The, at the south end, you've got the 30-foot wide access easement. Why not call that a town street?
Why do we want to make that a road?
Yeah, why not?
When the lot was subdivided, that piece went with the school with an agreement for access easement for the town. So we would have to purchase that land somehow. And, I mean, that was the decision when the school was sold, to make that an easement.
Yeah. We take subdivisions and the developer provides streets and then the town accepts them. I don't know if there's something about just an easement there that's better than a street, but that's been thought about.
I guess it's not clear to me what the town gains by trying to make that a road or what the I'm not quite sure what what you're looking for there, Jeff. But I might just be slow.
Well, the the town obviously has a lot of land back there, town green, there's pavilion, and there's all kinds of stuff back there that, not just the town, but, but, I mean, people in general want to get back there. And if it was a public street, anybody could just go down there. I don't know if there's any restrictions or any list of uses for that access easement. Is it just the town? Is it? Or what? But there's a lot of activity in there, in other words, that the public get to. I just don't know if anybody's thought about that or how the story's gone on that.
So your concern is primarily just about preserving access through that corridor?
I mean, if it became a town street, now the town's responsible to plow it and repair it, and that's going to happen. If it's a private driveway, maybe it doesn't get the maintenance it would otherwise get at the town owned. I mean, if the town needed that, you could just, by end and domain, take it. And you could learn in the future that that the town needed to do that. But I just wonder, I mean, what kind of thinking's been done? You know, should that be an easement or should it be a town street? That's all.
Yeah, I think, I think those decisions were made by your legislative authority when the property was sold to my client.
It was actually made even before that, when we were putting it on the market. And it was done, yeah. That's a previous decision made by legislative authority and the town when we proposed selling the property. That was a town meeting.
Yeah, I understand that, and
That was debated, Jeff. You know, it was talked about.
Okay. All right, I just, just wonder, I mean, if it's an easement, like I said, I mean, if it's an easement, the applicant will own it and have to maintain it. If it's a street, the town owns it, maintains it to the to the standards of the town, that's all.
Okay. Yeah. Other questions from the commission? Okay, hearing none. I have one last quick question. The rain garden. I didn't see anything about the planting details for the rain garden. What would be Yukon Nemo? Back to the noise, so I'm going to mute everyone except Mr. Heller. I looked at the Nemo site, which is sort of the rain garden site. And it looks like the, for most of those, the mature planting height for those is fairly significant once they've grown for a couple of years. What is the sort of expected planting in that range?
Typically, we have that planting scheme designed for us by a soil scientist because we want to make sure we put plants in, number one, that are good at assimilating the pollutants that are found from runoff from a commercial parking lot. And secondly, that are going to thrive based on the anticipated hydrology that you'll have in that depression. But I'm sure that there is a range, you know, it's not one particular plant, but it requires expertise to specify those. And I'm sure that if there's a concern about height, we can advise them to specify plants that will achieve a certain height. What we want to make sure we don't do is put plantings in there that are going to compromise the street view of the building because that's important to the success of the project. But certainly, you know, it can be anything from low-line shrubs, I would think, up to three or four feet.
Right, right, okay. One of the reasons I mention it is that there is a parking screening requirement in our regulations. And we kind of have an array of screening items in the front of the building. We have a rock wall, there's significant trees, and there's also the rain garden. And I'm not quite sure how all And there's also the the rain garden. And I'm not quite sure how all of that stuff plays together in order to make it both look desirable and provide screening for the parking area.
Well, I think all of those things in combination accomplish that. You have a very mature and I think very majestic streetscape along the front of that building with trees that I don't know have to be, you know, somewhere between seventy and a hundred years old. I think that that provides a much more aesthetically significant screening of activity than you would with three foot plantings. I also, you know, it there are a lot of issues at play here. Number one is is the question of whether or not screening can be required under the enabling legislation of eight dash two by a zoning commission on a use permitted by right rather than a special permit. The second legal issue at play here is that you have an existing parking lot in front of the school that probably does not comply with the technical requirements of your regulation. But I think my opinion is, and certainly what's best for your community and what's best for the Ledge Center Design District, is the combination of preserving the existing deciduous trees that you have along Colonel Ledgett Highway, maintaining the stone wall. And certainly, if you want some additional screening, we can incorporate plants that will achieve that into the rain garden.
Yeah, it's there's a there's a fine balance there, you know, that that I worry about about what that thing will look like, you know, as it matures. Because what I don't want is, you know, a continuous row of, you know, boxwoods. But certainly, you know, varied elevation that complements those things and provides screening, it would certainly be a win. And so that's sort of why I was trying to understand how the how the decisions on what gets planted there get made.
Yeah. First and foremost, as I indicated, in order to obtain the obtain the design objectives of the rain garden, one is pollutant assimilation. Two is being cognizant of the anticipated hydrology so we have healthy growth.
Yeah.
So those are the first two design parameters. Then, if you want working within some height limitations within those parameters, you know, we're certainly willing to do that.
Okay, great. Last chance for any questions from commissioners?
Just to follow up on what you just said, Nate. Do we have anything in the regulations about maintenance of screenings and plantings?
We have nothing concrete.
Okay. It'd be addressed in that way as they grow in if they're required to maintain it at a certain level.
Yeah, the applicant provide a sort of a maintenance plan on sheet four?
Certainly.
Personally address that?
It's it's not only the focal point of your community, it's the focal point of our project. So the applicant has a vested interest in making sure that that's both healthy, maintained, and attractive.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close off the deliberation. And I will make a motion to approve application PZ twenty oh one site plan for seven forty Colonel Ledyard Highway with the following conditions. Condition one is the addition zoning table to sheet one. Second, a note that the a separate sign permit will be required. Only the location of the kiosk signs is a part of the site plan. Handicap ramps will require a building officer approval prior to zoning certificate. Number four, a correction of the parking table on sheet one to reflect the updated calculations that Mr. Heller presented tonight. Number five, a modification to sheet three to correct the location of the handicap access to the daycare location. Six, a update to identify bollard protection for the propane tanks located near the daycare center. Seven, a note that fire marshal requirement, or sorry, fire marshal will need to approve final location and size of the propane tanks. Number eight, the building lights will be downlight, downlights with final design to be approved by the zoning official. So that's what I'll start out with if I could get a second.
I'll second it with one caveat. We're not allowed to condition the site plan. We need the applicant to agree to make those changes.
Interesting question, Mr. Cherry. My opinion is that you have, it's not just my opinion, I think there's significant law on it. You have the right to require conditions of approval that are required to bring the site plan into compliance with your regulations. Because a site plan review is a review, it's an administrative review based on your regulations only. So anything that's required in order to bring the site plan and the application into compliance with the regulations, you can condition, but you cannot condition on things beyond what is required by your regulations. And there's a case, Fettis versus Zoning and Planning Commission of the town of Colchester. It's a two thousand nine Connecticut appellate court case that affirms the authority of a zoning commission to do that.
Okay. Yeah. And, Mr. Cherry, I can say that that was my first reaction a couple of days days ago. And when I was looking at how to approve this, I researched that same thing. And I came to the same conclusion that we are allowed essentially limited condition authority there.
So I'll second that.
Okay, so any discussion on the conditions that I've discussed already?
We had talked about one way direction on the driveway and as much as we'd like them to consider that, I'm not sure we could make that a condition because nothing in our regs requires that, but it is a little safer. So, you know, if we'd asked that they consider it and if possible, do it, but I don't think that's a condition of approval.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes, sir.
If you're willing to give me a couple of minutes, I'd like to call my client and discuss that with the client.
So I mean, I think that's certainly worth the commission's time to get an answer on that. What I can do is is I can call a five minute recess to allow you to do that. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Chair Woody, I have a I have a question before we go into this recent recess sense. Harry is going to call his primary person. I guess I'm wondering of those items that you suggested, which of those Mr. Heller feels he cannot comply with?
I feel we can comply with all of those.
Okay, that's I just since you since you quoted so and so versus the public, the planning and zoning of Colchester, I wanted to make sure that you did not disagree with something. And if you did, then we then we need to hear it up upfront. Thanks.
And and I feel they're all based in your regulations.
Okay.
Great. So with that, I'm going to pause the recording at eight twenty eight to allow Mr. Heller to contact his client. And so we will restart at approximately eight thirty three. The recording, so at eight thirty five, we are back from recess. I'm just going to do a quick roll call to make sure that we have the commissioners back. So I'm gonna unmute all lines and just give a shout if you're here. Mr. Wood?
President.
Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Anlon?
Here.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yeah.
Mr. Kulo?
Here.
Mr. Fleese? Mr. Heller and Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Here.
Great, thank you. Sorry, I appreciate you tolerating me doing roll calls there. So with that, Mr. Heller?
Yes, again, for the record, Harry Heller, we've had a discussion with the client. We appreciate Mr. Cherry's brilliant suggestion. The client agrees. Peter and I feel that the site will both work better that way. So I think it's a win win for everyone. But it's got to be south to north.
South to north.
Package store entry, daycare exit.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Further discussion amongst the the commission. So as a reminder, we have a motion on the table with nine conditions and an agreement from the applicant to make the traffic one way through the parking lot. So any comments? I muted the line, so you'll need to unmute yourself before you talk.
Just one more comment, Mr. Chairman. You probably should add to that condition that the site plan be modified to incorporate appropriate signage to designate the one way traffic flow.
Thank you very much.
Google, are we approving locations of lighting?
Yeah, as part of the site plan, we are approving locations of lighting.
Was there one open item, a question from Commissioner Cherry about lighting at the south end of the site?
Mr. Cherry asked about whether there was specific lighting of the package store propane tank. There is currently no lighting there.
Okay.
So I mean, you know, for me, I don't view that as a particular problem. The propane tank, you know, is protected by bollards. So, you know, beyond just sort of a a nice to have in the winter that, you know, whoever's filling the tank might want. I don't see a significant problem. There's no walking access back there.
Any security lighting would be required to be cut off lighting anyway, right?
Yeah. So one of the conditions was that all building lights would be downlight cutoffs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just one one thing, going back to what I brought up about the the access easement versus a street, I was thinking about that discussion, that agreement where the town wanted an easement to support the the Ledge Fair that year and other activities in the interim in the near term before this was developed. I don't think there should be anything that would prohibit that from being a street, a town street. I haven't heard any any feedback from the applicant, though, what what he would feel on that point.
So I mean, as part of a site plan review, I'm not quite sure that that would be be appropriate. I mean, I would think that, you know, there could be a conversation down the road as access to properties behind this, you know, changed or how the town wanted to use it might change. They might come to the applicant to modify, you know, the the existing easement or purchase different rights. But for the this site plan, I'm not sure what what we would do.
Yeah, you might want to think about it a little bit, I think, would be the problem. But to me, it seems as if you know, the traffic that that's going to receive, which would be a lot, I mean, rage and people going back there for a lot of reasons that ultimately that would want to become a town street.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm just, I'm not sure what we would do now with that.
We don't have the we don't have the authority under section eight twenty nine of Connecticut statutes. If you look at our enabling legislation from the town, the planning commission is authorized to do a whole bunch of things with the exception of designating new roads. That was reserved for the legislative body. Also changed the access to that area back there on the town green and put in a lot of millings for more parking. And the access is off of Colonel Ledyard Highway. So I understand Mr. Kulo's concern. Quite honestly, that was debated and discussed prior to the marketing of the property. And to make sure the property was marketable had access to be able to build behind the school that was made an easement rather than ownership of the town. If if you shorten the property by enough, put a road in there, it makes the town green a little bit smaller and eliminates parking alongside the building and creates a a nonconformance because you don't meet the setback requirements from the side lot.
I mean, that's a lot of detail. I mean, I'm sure it could be worked out.
But I don't know that there's a willingness to do it, and we don't have the authority to do it. So.
Yeah, I mean, it would it would have to come from the applicant. That kind of a statement, that kind of a suggestion. But anyway, I point, I I think in the future, anyway, that with the the use the town makes of the town green, the pavilion, all these little things back there that who knows, the church might want to come in there. And and therefore, you know, that's that's really a public, that's really a public street. But I just I just point that out. If there's a lot of opposition to to having to think about that now and make it work, the access easement is fine, you know, I mean, it gets us back there in the meantime.
That's that's not part of this approval. That access easement exists on the property prior to us even considering the site plan. If you notice, that easement was on the on page one and page two, the existing conditions. We didn't add that easement as part of this application. That is an existing land use easement.
So I think, you know, we I appreciate Jeff's comments. I don't think we're going to do anything about it as part of this site plan application. I think certainly as, you know, the residential development and the phase development moves forward here, the final use of that easement in that area will probably be a subject of, you know, later applications. But I don't think it's appropriate for now. So any other questions or comments?
Jeff had Jeff had voiced some concern about Marty had voiced some concern about distance of alcohol establishments from schools and churches. We had debated that when we did the change to the regs. And it was best left to be an ordinance that would have done that, and the town council deferred on that. We also talked about propane regulations when we were doing the last change of the zoning regs. And realized that the building official and the fire marshal fully cover that. And other than showing where it is on a site plan, how it's done belongs to them more than to us was our decision at that time.
Thank you for bringing that up. I I also went to the Department of Public Safety, which is the one who sets the rules and the regulations. And then the fire marshal then interprets those. And so I think the way Nate, Chair Woody, put the edits on it, that we, you know, we've got the fire marshal to approve whether that four hundred and eighty gallons of
approve whether that 480 gallons of liquid propane is okay there. So I'm okay with that, but thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? So hearing none, I'm going to make a motion to amend the motion to add that the site plan will be modified to include signage to indicate the one-way access through the driveway. Could I have a second, please?
Second, Wood.
Thank you. Last call for questions or comments before I call the vote.
Did we add one-way to the comments? Did we mention that the driveway would be one-way south to north?
Just in saying that the site plan will be modified to indicate, indicate the signage of the modified travel.
Should also show them modified travel, so show the modified travel and signage to support.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I think that's what you said.
Yeah, it's better, it's slightly better wording than I had.
We're all great editors.
Yeah. Any other final comments? Okay, hearing none. So I will call a roll call vote for seated commissioners. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau? Couldn't hear you, Mr. Boudreau. Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Is that a yes vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
And Mr. Woody is a yes. So the motion passes five oh. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Heller and Mr. Gardner and Mr. Monarcha. I appreciate you guys coming back for a second time and doing this remotely. I know it probably took us a little longer than would have in person, but I think we got where we needed to get to. So thank you very much.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night. Okay. Let me switch notes here. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the continued discussion of the agritourism, agribusiness regulations. So there are two addition, new exhibits here. So first is the livestock guidance book. So the Connecticut Farm Bureau issued a new document, looked like beginning of this year, providing some new additional modified guidance on how to handle livestock, including home husbandry and a few things in there. One of the interesting things that is actually in there for, I believe, the first time is a section on bees, which was interesting. There's also several model regs from various towns on several different parts of that. The second item is, it's titled Agregs 608 2020. This is a very draft reg for modified agricultural regulations. And I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking through the direction that we're going here and get feedback from people on a few items that we're, that we're sort of trying to sort out here. So first, it's worth, the, the place that I'd like to start is we're essentially trying to divvy farms up into three different categories. And so the first is commercial farms, which we intend to be farms that are showing income. So these are farms that actually have income, profit-loss, that sort of thing. So they're actually operating in that way. The second is a home farm. And a home farm is, you know, essentially a farm that is producing farm products primarily for the consumption and education of the residents of the property. And the last is home husbandry, which is backyard chickens. And so those are sort of the three, three things that we're trying to separate farming into. And part of the reason for that is a lot of what, you know, we're trying to do here is around allowing all of the farm accessory uses. And so that's all of the, you know, the, the activities and all that type of thing. And what we wanna do is we're trying to, or at least, you know, what I think we wanna do is we want to attach those accessory uses to commercial farms and not sort of the other, the other categories. And so that's the approach that we're, we're trying to take there. Any, any thoughts on that as a general strategy? And you're all muted, so you'll need to unmute if you have something you wanna say.
Mike Cherry, I, I think that's something we've been trying to discern for a long time, that, that what's the difference between somebody who's farming as an occupation, somebody who's farming at home for his own use, but it's more than backyard chickens and rabbits. So I think it's a step in the right direction. And, and of course, the devil's in the details.
Yeah, I certainly encourage all commissioners, if they've got ideas on how to really separate these two categories, you know, spit them out now or spit them out in, you know, writing at a, at a future time. You know, because for me, I think that, I think the commercial farm is one where they're showing income. And that's sort of the, the category that, you know, the IRS uses and everyone else uses to identify a commercial farm. And so I think we should be doing the same thing. But I'm, I'm open to opposition there.
Well, you know, we talked about it when we were rewriting the regs on, on should we have a agricultural zone? And we decided for a lot of reasons that probably wasn't appropriate for the town of Leger at the time and probably would become less appropriate as we went forward and grew. But we also talked, hey, should permits be required? How do we know who's a farm and who's not a farm? And, and we talked about that even when Charlie was here as our planner. How do you, how do you identify? This is a farm, so it's okay that they have a dozen horses. You know, they meet the, the agricultural department rules for livestock and animals. What part does zoning have in that? And I guess it's good that they republished their book because it was getting longer tooth.
Yeah, so since you bring it up, the, since you bring up sort of the, the permit, you know, versus something else. So under, if you look under E here is where the commercial farm accessory uses are listed. All of these are by zoning permit with the exception of the event barns or large-scale events which, in which amplified music is used or greater than 10 motor vehicles are expected. Everything else can be done by zoning permit. So that means you can do in small classes, you know, with half a dozen people. You just need a permit. If you're doing, you know, farm processing things, things like that, all of that is just by, by permit. And so really just that one category that we would, that we would be involved in. The idea is for everything else to pretty much be taken care of by the, by, through a simple permit.
Now, any use that is currently legal that would, that exists, that would require a permit going forward, ends up being grandfathered.
Yeah.
So if they have a legal use because we didn't regulate it and now we do, so guy's got a farm. If I read this correctly, under application requirements, a lot of permits could be required. But if it's existing and it's legal today, he doesn't need to get a permit. He's grandfathered. If he wants to expand, he's gonna have to come in to get a permit as I read what, what we're proposing. And, and that'll be, I would say that'll probably be one of the more contentious items with existing agricultural uses in town. How do you do that? How do you control that? Why did we throw Kyle under the bus? You know, those types of things. But I, I think to go forward, you need that. And then, you know, there's other things in here that'll be subject of discussion. And, and I think, you know, I, I think the sooner we can get this out in the public domain for workshops or something, I agree with you that, that it'll make it a better document. But right now, it's approvable with minor tweaks, as written, which is amazing. Of course, when the public gets a hold of it, we'll find out. You know, I'm not a farmer. I grew up in the city, so I, you know, if you tell me I can't have something within 100 feet of my property line, that I can't graze my goats within 100 feet of a property line, I don't know if that creates a problem for a farm or not. We talked back, Eric, when we did two, when we did two revs ago, we talked with our consultant. And at that time, the Farm Bureau and the farmers, they did want a 100-foot setback. But not on their side of the property line. On the other side of the property line, no residences or anything within 100 feet that could infringe on their right to farm. So it's always an interesting issue.
Yeah, if you look at the, the guidance from the Farm Bureau, what their suggestion is, is that the setback for housing and structures is fine. There should be no setback for grazing.
Yeah.
You know, which, you know, I, I could, I could see that point. So I, I, I did think that that separation of what things require setbacks and don't require setbacks, you know, is, is a pretty fair point.
The minimum, sorry. The minimum size for a farm in Leger is still three acres, right?
Well.
That's, that, that's, that's a good question. So what I actually did is for the commercial farms, there is currently no minimum. So you can have a two-acre commercial farm. Where I think that is problematic is around some of the accessory uses that we allow. Some of those may require a minimum acreage in order to be viable. But in order to have a commercial farm and, you know, you could do intensive farming on two acres, just fine. But I think those, you know, those limits are kind of up for discussion on what you wanna do. What is common, from what I saw in the surrounding towns, is a five-acre minimum for commercial farms. I didn't currently do that.
And Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. I guess my comment is not about acreage or anything like that, but my question for clarification is, I guess I, of those three categories that we talked about, commercial farm, home farm and, and home husbandry, unless I'm confusing so many that I did read, but the question is about grandfather or changing one's status. And so in some of the local zoning, I remember 50, greater than 50% of the income had to come from the, the, the main category, if we're, if we, if we decide to go with that. And then it, it appeared to me that if it was, if the ownership changed or they wished to change the category, it's not transferable. Or you, or if you, if it's sold, it's not transferable. Am I, am I understanding that correctly? So if, if I sell you my, my commercial farm, or I, if I sell some property, I'm, I'm actually confused on this section. And that's what I was, I, this Agregs of 06, 08, 20, 20. I just looked at it again when I was offline there. It is, to me, I'm not sure how to go between the three categories that we were talking about. And then if, if I change my category and then somebody else purchases it and wants to go back, I'm not sure how I, how we get back to what the original was.
So well, if, if you are a approved commercial farm and you sell your, and I sell my commercial farm to you,
Yeah.
by the regs that we currently have here, I believe, that's still a commercial farm.
Okay.
So the only place where there is a permit that needs to be periodically re-upped is in the home husbandry.
Okay.
So that's, that's my thinking there. I, I also think it, it'd probably be fairly unusual for someone to migrate between the categories with, you know, sort of the possible exception of, I suppose you could see someone moving from, you know, four chickens, if they've got enough acreage, to a, to a home farm, which would allow them, you know, slightly more things. But I would guess it would be fairly unlikely for someone to be to switch from a home farm to a commercial farm, I, I would guess. But, you know, we don't provide any mechanism for switching between those. It's just what do you qualify for?
Thanks. I'm, I'm off, I'm looking to see where I might have read that and it doesn't leap out at me, so I'm gonna stop looking for it. But I will, I will check through that again, yeah.
If you, if you see something that you think doesn't make sense, definitely flag it. It's entirely possible.
I know that exists for car repair and gas station-type stuff. That there are strict rules on being able to pass your license on. You can't sell it without somebody going and getting a new license. It's not transferable to the new buyer, but it's transferable like within the family-type stuff.
Okay.
But I know that exists there. I don't know if that could have been where you saw it.
I thought the permit went with the property.
Zoning in general goes with the property, yes.
It does.
A good spot, you know, the corner of Lamb Town Road and Colonel Leger Highway that we hear about every once in a while. That commercial property for doing what they do got sold, but the permit went with it and we're still stuck with all this stuff out by the road.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, generally if it's a legal use, right?
Well, it was legal because it was grandfathered use. Legal because it was approved.
And I think no matter what we do here, we're going to be stuck with dealing with particular cases and whether or not what is being done in these properties was, is legal or not. No matter what we're do, we're gonna have some ugly, you know, case-by-case examinations on, on what was formally legal. And so what is grandfathered in any of these regulations?
Well, Kyle's young. His hair won't turn gray overnight. One of the things that I didn't see when I read through it, and we, we talked about it when we were redoing regs, and that's restrictions on animal use in areas of the watershed, rules for, for water protection resource-type stuff. And I'll go, I'll go dig that up and send it to you and you, Liz and Kyle to see if it's appropriate. It was in the Groton watershed protection regs. And we probably ought to look at that. It may affect home husbandry and home farming more than anything else, but I know it's worth looking at.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's a good thing. That's, that's not in there currently. One of the other things.
This is pretty, this is pretty funny. A couple of weeks ago, we had a dozen turkeys go through the backyard. Now, I don't have a permit for any of them, but then they're wild. And the deer and associate wildlife, and you can't regulate that stuff.
Kyle, did you hear that admission that Mr. Boudreau has illegal turkeys in his backyard?
Right on it. Do I deserve a citation?
Yeah, so one of the other things is there is, at the end of this, there is a, there was a signage section, which I, I'm not sure is actually needed. So if if you, if you take a look in 9.5 of the regs, we allow for a commercial use in residential zones. You're allowed a sign, which is essentially the same size as what we talked about here in the agricultural sign. You're allowed a sign, which is essentially the same size as what we talked about here in the agricultural sign. If you're in a commercial district, right, you can put lots of, lots of types of different signs. Um, and so you're covered in, in those districts. Uh, and then we also actually have uh, a separate, uh, farm identification sign, which is tucked down in nine, five, C. Uh, and so someone who's detail oriented, uh, you know, definitely take a look at, uh, how many ways we seem to be covering signage for something like this.
Yeah, the farm identification sign section was written because somebody put a sign up and we didn't feel he should have to tear it down.
Yeah, so.
Anything about, uh, seasonal signage? Probably not.
There's nothing specific about seasonal signage, but if you're, you know, if you're allowed a, a sign, um,
This provides additional area for, for, you know, and regulations for using seasonal signage.
We allow temporary signs in our sign regs and that could be seen as temporary. But it does allow up to six signs along the frontage. If you have, that, that's words I hadn't seen before.
Sign for each, you know, strawberries, potatoes, you know, when you see those.
Makes me think of Beakock Turkey Farm starts telling me about their ice cream long before you get, you know, probably in Sterling before you go. Yeah, it's where the turkeys came from, Tom.
Yep, maybe.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, actually area wise, the, the signage in the proposed regs give you, gives you sixteen square feet. And the, uh, nine, five gives you eighteen square feet. So it's, you know, it's pretty comparable size wise and the farm identification is eighteen square feet too. So either way, there needs to be some consolidation, uh, of, uh, the, the sign reg. So we need to do something there. I think the spirit of what we've got here is right, but there'll need to be some consolidation. So we have that in one place.
Maybe replace all that with say, C section nine.
We can, and I, I, you know, I think, you know, if we do that, what we, what we might want to, uh, you know, clean up is make, is essentially provide one reg. Cause I think my concern would be, you know, we don't really want people coming in under nine, five, A two and nine, five, one, A and nine, five, C for farming. You know, I think we probably ought to provide a, a single location for, for that. So the other significant change that's in here is the special permit, home husbandry, uh, stuff was all removed. Uh, so home husbandry is, uh, simply the permit only home husbandry for, you know, rabbits, ducks, chickens, turkeys. Um, and we did that, you know, I keep saying we, but it's mainly I. Trying to blame other people. I don't know why. Um, was that, 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 those regs were never used. Um, so I couldn't think of any time when anyone had ever come in with an application on that. Um, and what we would want to do in this case is that's someone that we would move into the home farm, uh, section, you know, instead of trying to, you know, sneak them into home husbandry. Um, so that, that is a somewhat significant change. Um, all of the, the general principle uh, of, uh, the, the home husbandry, the, you know, the permit only, the degree is the same. Um, but we did eliminate that one category.
So, so if I read it close, I could have rabbits, I can have chickens for home husbandry on any size lot. To the limits that we have, ten thousand square feet, so many birds, so many others. But if I want hoofed animals, if I want goats and sheep and what have you, puts me into home farm and I need at least three acres.
Yeah, that's right.
Probably makes sense. Under farm products, I kept looking for, where did we include vineyards?
Yeah, we didn't. Um, that's currently missing.
I mean, I tried to crowbar it into, uh, products from any tree vine or plant, but that's, that's hard.
Yeah. And so I, I think it's, you know, the, the, when you look around, most of the model regs are all around, um, farm breweries. And so I think, uh, a little bit of research is needed to, um, figure out the right way to deal with, um, vineyards, which, you know, fundamentally is mostly a, uh, farm store situation, I think.
Could be. But you know, I'm trying to think of, of vineyards other than Mogul Sierra. So if I look at Stonington, uh, there, they got a, I could call it a farm store, I guess. Most of the vineyards we've been to in the area.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, they, they would fall, uh, into, uh, that, uh, you know, sensitive, uh, event category, uh, the large event category. Cause that's, I mean, that's the, that's, that's what they're doing on their side.
But if, let's, let's take Paul. Paul has people. Yeah, he has a tasting room. You could bring your own food. He has some live entertainment. Supposedly all covered by a special permit or a permit. He's, he's not doing weddings and big things now, but I'm sure he has a desire to do it. How, how do we accommodate that kind of stuff? And I, I, I don't have an answer. I'm just noting that it wasn't there and I'm scratching my head.
Yeah, I mean, but current regs, I think he would fall under that, you know, event for, uh, uh, music and lots of vehicles. And he would need a, uh, special permit, uh, in order to do that. And I, and I don't know how you allow those type of things without special permit, to be honest, because there, there's a lot of moving parts on that.
There's, there's a lot of moving parts and there's history I'm not aware of.
In ignoring that specific case, you know, just, you know, even when you kind of imagine, you know, that, that type of thing, that's tough to. But I, I'll do a bit more, uh, research on vineyards specifically, um, and I'll take another look, you know, um, North Stonington has pretty extensive regs around that. And so it's possible that they've got something in there that we could lift, um, in order to cover that stuff better, or at least get a, a better set of standards and that thing.
I mean, if I look at three farms in the area that sponsor public events, it'd be Mogul Sierra Vineyards, uh, Holmberg Orchards and Sweet Hill Farms. Mogul Sierra Holmberg appears most of what they do is, is very agriculturally based. Sweet Hill Farms, uh, reaches out past that. But you know, if you have a flea market and a greenhouse that's not being used, does that violate the spirit of our agricultural uh, accessory uses? Kinda, but we want to prohibit that. I don't know. And, and, you know, former chair of the zoning commission and I went round and round on whether we should write regs to allow things that already exist, or should we write regs on what we want in the future? And the answer was yes, in both cases. And it's hard. It's not easy.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that you do see and that might be, you know, a way of trying to deal with that is, you know, some of the areas do have, uh, regulations around the farm stores, uh, which control, you know, uh, essentially a, a percentage of the produce, you know, of the items that are sold in your farm store are produced on property or in Ledgerd. Um, and that's sort of the dividing line of whether it is an agricultural activity or it's a, a retail activity, you know? So if you're selling produce and you also happen to have twenty percent of whatever else, um, you know, that's not an issue. But it's twenty percent produce and eighty percent something else.
I mean, that was originally how the farm brewery rules, reg, uh, statute was written. You needed a percentage onsite or in, in Connecticut anyway. That may have morphed since then, because we haven't done much with it.
I believe that's still how those regs are written. So in order to, to qualify for that, you've got to have, um, percentages grown in Connecticut, I believe, but it's worth double checking.
Uh, you would, you had excluded farmers markets from commercial farmer sales? I would say that many commercial farmers sell very successfully at the Ledgerd Farmers Market. Broadbrook, uh, and, and others, the guy who does pigs, the guy who does beef. Their, their viable commercial operations and a large market is farmer's market. So we may want to think about eliminating that exclusion. Would you like comments on these or do you want to just have us do over, look at it and do a workshop in the future?
Uh, so, no, absolutely. Comments are welcome. Um, and so, you know, I think the, the, the place that we want to get to is we want to get this into something, uh, that I think we can take to a, uh, public workshop. And so I think that's, that's certainly the goal. And so what I would say, uh, to, uh, commissioners is go ahead. Either mark it up or however you feel comfortable, uh, making, uh, changes or additions to it. Um, send it to staff, um, to coordinate, um, those alterations. Um, and we'll try to beat those changes up, uh, into, uh, a document that we can take to workshop. Um, uh, possibly next month. If people send us, uh, stuff in the next, uh, couple of weeks, um, we can try to schedule a workshop. Um, but i- in order to do that workshop, I want to make sure that we get, uh, some of the farms in town to actually show up, um, and, and give us feedback on, on what we're proposing here.
Well, we know, uh, Mike Lamb will comment, Bill Garrett probably comment, Angela Angelini, I'm sure would be interested. We probably talk to the farmers market people and find out what other local farmers are active and, and we have a list. I think EDC has it to, to address and send it out. Sure would like their input, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause I, I would like to take it to workshop so that we can get that, uh, feedback prior to, uh, moving forward with an application. Yeah. So yeah, definitely. Uh, people mark stuff up, send it along, um, and, uh, you know, send that to, um, Liz and Deb, um, to coordinate that stuff, uh, and, and we can mark it up. Um, any other, uh, things around ag that people want to talk about? Okay. Uh, so we'll, uh, close, uh, the, this discussion for now on that. Um, and yeah, please send comments. Uh, we'll take, uh, all the help, uh, you know, we can get there. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion of P O C D update for sidewalk in inventory. Uh, Mr. Boudreau has done a bunch of work on this, um, which I have done a horrible job of forwarding to the rest of you. Um, so I'm gonna have to postpone that discussion, uh, till next time with apologies to Tom. Um, and we will. Sorry about that, Tom. Under new business, uh, we have, uh, no new applications. Uh, so next up is the planning and zoning fees. Uh, Deb, could you pull, uh, that document up on the screen? So that everybody can, uh, take a look at it. Okay. So, um, here's, uh, the, and so this is, uh, the, uh, document, um, marked up, uh, by, uh, staff, uh, with, uh, the, uh, proposed, uh, changes here. Um, and so, uh, we just need to make a, uh, uh, a motion that approves of this with any comments, uh, that we've got about, um, the fee schedule. Um, and so, you know, I think, you know, in, in general, um, I don't have, uh, any specific problems. For the most part, you know, I, I view this as, uh, a, uh, staff decision, uh, to understand what it actually costs them, uh, to process applications, um, and, and that sort of thing. Um, I did have a couple of, uh, comments, um, that, uh, I would like uh, to pass on. Um, and I'll go through those and then, uh, any commissioners who have other questions or comments, uh, chime in there. Um, so the, the first comment that I had, Deb, you can scroll down a little bit. Um, uh, there's a, uh, home office, uh, permit fee, um, which I'm not entirely sure, uh, what that is. Um, and why that wouldn't just be, uh, this, the same fee as a home occupation. Uh, the second comment that I had, if you can scroll down a little bit more, Deb, uh, is there are separate, separate fee structures uh, for, uh, modification, uh, of, uh, approved site plans, um, as well as, uh, regular site plan modifications or regular site plan applications. Uh, for me, uh, modifications of approved site plans that are not administrative, um, are about as much work as, uh, uh, regular site plan modifications. Uh, so my comment would be why there is a separate, uh, call out for, uh, for those that has a, a different, uh, fee structure. Uh, the last comment I had, if you can scroll down a little bit more to the subdivision regs, um, this is just something that isn't clear. Uh, there's a, uh, a, a, a fee for, uh, any subdivision, resubdivision requiring a public hearing. Uh, my guess is that's intended to be on top, uh, of the, uh, number of lot base fee. Um, so I think that language ought to be cleared up to, to make, make that clear that that is intended to be. You do your math based on the number of lots. Um, and if a, uh, public hearing is required, uh, that's an additional five hundred dollar fee. If, if that's the intention of staff, I think that should be, uh, cleared up. Um, th- those were my initial comments. Uh, any discussion from the commission?
Uh, Mike Cherry, while you're there on the subdivision, we've had comments in the past and we missed it the last time we updated the regs. Look, we charge more per lot for a large subdivision than we do for a small subdivision. And the comment we got was there's some economy of scale as the subdivision gets larger. And it doesn't cost more per lot just because you have twenty-five lots than it does for ten lots. Matter of fact, the ten lot subdivision probably costs you more per lot than the twenty-five yacht lot subdivision. People have looked back saying, well, there's more roads, there's more drainage. That's all covered separately. Uh, when you start looking at engineered fees for subdivisions. So I, I would say that one of two things, either we pick two hundred dollars per lot. I don't care how big your subdivision is, figuring that the small one costs more per lot than the big one. Or we flip the numbers so that the small one costs three hundred, the middle one costs two fifty and the large one costs two hundred.
And I, this is Tom. I completely agree with Mike on that one.
And, and we've got burdened on that a couple of times. We had somebody complain. I told him who to complain to. I said, it's not us. We don't set the fees. We just recommend go talk to the town council. We never heard the other word. I like the change in words for if we need an additional review. I think that's better. I don't think, I, I agree with, with Chairman Woody that here we are in the age of COVID nineteen and everybody's got a home office. I'm sitting in one right now. But it's not a business. Uh, and even if it were a business, what does zoning care about? A desk, a wifi connection, a couple of printers, a scanner and a shredder? I haven't modified my, my principal residence. Now, when I go to home occupation and that's my full job, I don't know, more than an office. Yeah. We, we had this discussion with New London Septic, if you remember. Yeah. What, what he wanted was a desk in his home to send his billing out. What his neighbor was complaining about was the big yellow truck, the hunting truck parked in the yard saying, is this his business site or not? One case, you want to sit at a desk and fill out your paperwork? No permit required to have a ball. Second case, you want to park all your vehicles here and clean them and do all that? It's a home occupation. And matter of fact, it's not even a home occupation because it's visible to your neighbors. You got a commercial practice in a residential zone. I think the home office one can go away. I think the home office one can go away without any harm.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that. Oh, sorry, Tom.
Yes, I certainly agree with Mike on that one.
Unless there's a distinction that you have someone like a bookkeeper coming in to your home office.
And it's a home occupation, right?
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Cause we certainly allow for, you know, home occupations that, you know, is a, you know, and, you know, an attorney or something like that. You know, who primarily uses their office for, you know, private use, then that's fine. But I don't know what, I don't know what a home office is. You know, in terms of zoning, I.
Where you're sitting now, if you have more than one computer screen.
I have three.
I, I thought it was if your desk raised and lowered, that was the, that was the.
Could be it. Yeah.
Any other thoughts on this?
I have, this is Jeff Q. A little, I, just a couple of, a couple of things that I noticed when I read this. We have three categories of fees, zoning permit fees, planning and zoning commission application fees, division, resubdivision, application base fees. In the first sentence, there's a statement that says that applications are subject to Connecticut state fee of $50 in addition to the base fee. And I think it, that also applies to the other fees, the zoning permit fees and the planning and zoning commission application fees. Is that correct?
Yeah, these are, these are the town fees only.
There's a good one. I think we should change the word base fees in that first sentence to town fees. And then put a, a heading above that column of, of numbers and that these are the town fees. And the $60 Connecticut state gets added to every one of those, each one.
Okay.
This is the kind of thing that's, that's probably been limping along for a long time and everybody kind of pays the fee no matter what they do, but I remember this is the kind of thing that Abner Rickover would make you walk the plank for. You know, it just, it's because it just doesn't.
I certainly know staff have dealt with people who are angry or surprised when they come in thinking that, you know, they have a $25 fee for a shed and it turns out that they have some other fees as well. So I, I think it's a fair comment to make that more clear.
And, and they should be surprised based on this wording. Yeah. So we should fix that.
Yeah. Anything else?
Well, if I take it the way it's written, accessory structures and additions or expansions to structures on residential lots up to 200 square feet. So that's a 200 square foot residential lot, the way it's written. It's not a 200 square foot structure, but that's kind of picky. And then at the next one, it's on lots from 200 square feet to 1,000 square feet, but that's wordsmithing.
Yeah. Any other comments?
So I'll make a motion that the planning and zoning commission modifies, modifies approves of the proposed modifications to the land use fee schedule with the following comments. We suggest removal of the home offices line from the fee schedule. We recommend clarification of the stated Connecticut fees are separate from the town fees. We request clarification of, or at least simplification of the fee structure for modification of site plan applications and removal of that as a separate line item. We don't understand the current fee structure for subdivisions that increase with the number of lots. And we feel that that price should be reversed or made the same regardless of the size of the subdivision. As well as clarification of the additional fee for a public hearing. And lastly, clarification in the zoning permit fee section that the square footage refers to the size of the structure and not the size of the lot. Did they get everything there?
Yes.
Great.
I'll second it the way you, yes.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a roll call vote. Mr. Cherry.
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon. Mr. Wood.
Marty, you may be.
Sorry. Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Boudreaux. Mr. Boudreaux. Mr. Boudreaux, is that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Woody is a yes as well. So the motion passes by though. Thank you. Next on our agenda, I have no correspondence at this point. Ms. Burdick is in Las Vegas. And so we have a whole town planner report. She'll forward everything on to us next month. Mr. Felice, you have a report which you kindly attached to the agenda. Do you have any comments on that? And if commissioners have questions, please.
Yeah. So I just wanted to give you an update on permits. Obviously we're receiving a lot lately. It's springtime and everyone's home. So they're doing projects now with the whole coronavirus. I want to give you an update on the outdoor dining applications. So, so far we've received three of them. Fireside was very minimal. They were just moving to existing tables. So that was approved by staff. And yesterday we received two additional triple B and Parks Place. And I just received those yesterday afternoon. So they're still in review. Hopefully those should be squared away for next week. And any other restaurants in town, I spoke with them, they provided paperwork and there's no outdoor dining currently. I will keep monitoring that. And then if anything changes, I will make sure we get the application from them. Aside from that, we just, like I said, been crazy busy with intake of permits. And just trying to keep up with that. So unfortunately I did not get to any further zoning enforcement since our last meeting. Hopefully in the coming, you know, weeks, we can catch back up with that and I'll have that date for you next month. But any questions or anything?
Questions from the commission?
No, but.
Good to me.
Good job.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Cal. I appreciate that. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
Don't we have a set of minutes to approve?
Oh, did I miss those? I did. Yes, we have a special meeting minutes from our last meeting on May 19.
I move in favor.
My second. Any corrections or modifications? Pretty short. Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Mr. Cherry.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon. Boudreaux.
Yes.
The chair is also a yes vote. So the motion, motion passes by though. Thank you, Mr. Cherry for correcting me. With that, I will once again attempt to entertain a motion. With that, we will, we're sorry, was somebody saying something? With that, I will adjourn our meeting at 9:34 PM. Thank you all for your remote attendance and apologies for the technical difficulties. And the.